Everybody's here, so why don't we go ahead and get started? I will call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one to order. Madam Clerk, do we have roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, just a reminder that this meeting is held pursuant to Section Three of Executive Order N twenty-nine dash twenty issued by Governor Newsom on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty. Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. For those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agendaized item discussion. You can also email your requests to cityclerk@templicity.us. You should do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. So we will now move on to item two. And for our invocation tonight, I'm pleased to welcome back Mr. Jerry Jambazing, as we all know, the business owner of Wonder Cleaners and Drapery right here in town, located at ninety-one thirty-six East Las Tunas Drive. And Jerry, I didn't memorize that. I have it written down in front of me, so I just thought I'd say it, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know where you're at. I just don't know the address by heart. But Jerry will be providing our invocation for us this evening. So with that, Jerry, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to ask your blessing on this council meeting. I pray that you would give your wisdom to our council members and support staff for the decisions that are made tonight. We pray for and especially thank you for all our frontline workers in healthcare, including Temple Station Sheriff's Department and Engine Forty-seven firefighters and our armed forces all over the world. They put their own safety aside as they watch over us. We think of our citizens at our nursing homes and hospitals that have not been able to see their loved ones. Father, as more and more people are able to take the vaccine, we pray that this pandemic we have been in for eleven months would slow and come to an end. Lord, your word tells us that nothing escapes you and that you will not give us more than we can endure. We pray for all the families that have been affected by COVID-nineteen and have lost loved ones. From City Hall to nursing homes, we all know families that have suffered. For two-hundred-and-twenty years now, our nation has had a peaceful transition of leadership. It is the hallmark of our democracy that other countries wish they had. With the recent political unrest, my prayer is that demonstrations possibly all over our land would not overshadow what our forefathers laid out for us, just as with our council members and all elected officials. They have sworn to uphold the Constitution of the United States. God bless Temple City and the United States of America. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for those words. And certainly, you know, tomorrow is a big day, and we know that, you know, we will we will act accordingly. So thank you for reminding us of that. Okay, we will now go ahead and start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Anyway, so please stand. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay. We will now move on to item number four. We will begin with our ceremonial matters, and we do have a presentation this evening by our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Matsumoto, who will tell us about our holiday decoration contest winners. So, Mr. Matsumoto, it's all yours.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor Chavez, members of the city council. Can everybody see the slideshow presentation up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
We can see them, yes.
Great. We had received confirmation that a few of our winners are going to be here on tonight, and I do see some callers on. So I'll go ahead and do the presentation, and then we can check in with and see if any of those winners are here tonight. But first off, I'd like to recognize all the twenty-twenty Holiday Decorating Contest winners. This year of all years, I think it was especially important to have this holiday cheer. Of course, during our pandemic, it really, I think, lightened and brightened the the community for, you know, throughout Temple City. In total, we had eighteen winners. Fourteen were residential winners, and four were businesses from all over Temple City. And even though we're in the pandemic, this was one of our few programs, at least from the residence standpoint and business residents, that the event pretty much went on like it traditionally has been in previous years. We had staff go out and identify our top homes and businesses, and then all those top nominations were forwarded to our city council and Parks and Recreation Commissioners to vote on. Throughout the entire community, the eighteen winners that we have identified here really rose to the top from from all the homes and businesses in Temple City. Just some background information, too. On December twenty-first, each one of the winners received a winning lawn sign, and those were delivered directly to their residence and businesses, as well as all photos of the winners were posted on the city website. So without further ado, we'll go through our winning homes and businesses. So we have our first one, which is five-one-four-three Arden, which is Robert and Tammy Vasquez. We have fifty-six-twenty-six Golden West, which is Calvin and Debbie Rogers. One of our business winners was Pepe's. Next, we have a residential, which is forty-eight-fifty-two Cloverly, and that's Alex and Annabelle Monariel. We have forty-nine-oh-one Golden West, which is the Hayes Trust. Next up is forty-nine-twenty-seven Ardsley, and that's Randy and Celia Hilgard. Fifty-five-oh-three Golden West, Tom Thompson and Dolores Chavez. Fifty-seven-thirty-three Temple City Boulevard, Elizabeth Payne. Fifty-eight-oh-eight Kaufman, Fan Sun Tom. Six-two-two-four Hart, and that's Carl and Jeanette Blum. Sixty-two-fifty-six Avon Avenue, David and Robin Lopez. Sixty-four-thirty-six Loma, and that's Karen and Robert Johnston. Nine-zero-five-nine Woolley, that's Chen Ming-Chi and Feng Sam. We have one-zero-zero-three-one Bow Street, which is Don Katz. This is the one our Parks and Rec drives by every single day when we are in the office, so we appreciate this one. One-zero-five-five-two Olive, and that's Carolyn and Robert Kibbit. And then finally, the last three of our business winners, we have Banana Bay Restaurant, Modern Lighting on Las Tunas. And finally, the dive over at Camellia Plaza Square. So, Mayor Chavez, that are all eighteen winners. At this time, if you are one of our winners and if you're calling in, if you don't mind identifying yourself, if you are one of the winners, and we'd love to be able to recognize you, and I'm sure council as well.
Do we have any of the winners joining us this evening? Go ahead and speak up.
Hi, this is Pepe from Temple City.
Oh, Pepe's, okay. Very, very nice. Congratulations, and thank you so much for participating in this year's event. In fact, I just, I had my drive-through dinner a few days ago. So that, not only are you doing nice decorations, but you're still putting out the great food that we all love, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your business.
Well, thank you, and hopefully, things will will pick up and continue doing well. So thank you so much. Anyone else that's on the line that we have? I know that we have a lot of winners, but, you know, I want to thank Adam, of course, and his staff, and and our commissioners, and of course, my colleagues on the council for for helping with this. There's no question that this, every year, we've always, we've tried to do something different as far as lighting and making sure that, you know, we recognize holidays, and even more so this year, of course. I think these all went to lifting our community spirit during a difficult time, and I want to thank everyone who participated and helped out. And and you may know this, that there is an item on the consent calendar this evening that will hopefully continue that community spirit and allow those who feel that they would like to do so, and that is to leave some of those lights up. I know some of you will probably want to take them down just for the sake of your electric bill, but, you know, those who are inclined to leave some of those up to to help them through these difficult days, you may have the opportunity to do that. So, but thank you again, and Adam, thank you. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, it does. And just a reminder, we will be sending out all the winners, in addition to the lawn signs and being up on the website, a certificate of recognition from the mayor, so we'll be getting that over to you, Mayor Chavez, shortly. And if I can, I just wanted to recognize really quickly our key staff member that really put this event on for us, and that's our Department Secretary Jennifer Venters. So I just wanted to give her a shout out for a job well done.
Please pass our our congratulations on to Jennifer as well. Thank you very much, all of you, for a great job. Okay, before we move on to our next item, I do have one other ceremonial matter. I was brought to my attention that we have a a very special person in our city. Her name is Clyda Bernasconi, and Ms. Bernasconi will be turning ninety years young on January twenty-eighth. And so I know all of us are will join, all of you will join me in in wishing her a very, very happy birthday this year and continued good health. You know, I know the Bernasconi family. One of her sons, John, he and I go way back to Little League days. Unfortunately, he was in the National League, I was in the American League, so we didn't always get along, but it was a nice friendly not getting along. Those were the rivalries, so. But, you know, the Bernasconi family has been in Temple City for a long time, and certainly we want to recognize and wish Clyda a very happy birthday and and be safe and stay healthy, and and we will look forward to seeing you around. She's she actually lives across the street from Live Oak Park, so I'm sure she looks forward to getting back over there and seeing the events go on. So, but thank you for that. And now we will then move on to item number six. We will move on to our public comments for items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I will begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
Mayor Chavez, there are no email requests to speak, and there are no public callers on the line.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So I will close public comments. We will now move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. So I will again ask our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak on this agenda item.
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? Maybe Fernando, was that you making the motion?
Well, I don't know. It was both William and I. William, go ahead.
All right.
I'll move to approve it.
Do we have a second? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist? Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. And just to highlight before we leave this item, a couple of things that I referred to earlier. One is one of those items that we just approved related to the enforcement of holiday lights and decorations. It is now, we we just found that we will be holding in abeyance the enforcement of those of public nuisance cases related to holiday lights. So what that really means is that you can leave those lights up for now, and again, we recognize that they will certainly add to the community spirit, and we want to continue with that. And also the overnight parking enforcement restrictions, those will also be relaxed for the time being until further notice. So thank you for that. And now we will move on to item number eight, which is a public hearing, and there is none. Number nine, unfinished business, there is none. We will now move on to item ten, our new business, and we will begin with a legislative update. So, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Ms. Tenny Chan, who has taken over a few assignments over the last few months, will give a very brief overview of some of the high-level relevant legislation. We won't go through every single piece of legislation that's in the report, just some of the higher-level stuff. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Chan.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight before you, you have a summary of bills that were signed into law last September for the twenty-twenty legislative session. The year kicked off with two thousand and two hundred bills introduced in February twenty-twenty, and by the time the year ended, only four hundred and twenty bills made it to the governor's desk compared to last year. I'm sorry.
I don't see Tenny. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, I don't have my camera on.
Good, go ahead, Tenny.
Okay, I'm sorry. So compared to last year, twenty-nineteen, end of twenty-nineteen, twelve hundred bills had made it onto the governor's desk, so about only a third of the bills made it to the governor's desk by the end of twenty-twenty. So a lot of bills died or had to be postponed due to the multiple recesses that had to be taken due to the pandemic. Legislators had to focus on certain bills that took priority, for example, AB thirty-eight-eight, which is the eviction moratorium. The bills that are in the staff report were selected from bills that the League of Cities highlighted, and their full presentation is attached for your reference. So the bills in the staff report we've selected because it's not necessarily will affect the city operationally, but just something that we want council to be informed of, and it's just important for our staff to be informed of as well. Like the previous year, the state continues to focus on increasing its affordable housing supply, and other legislation that we should note are bills related to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, homelessness, and police reform. Some of the bills that the city was monitoring last year, and the previous legislative update given to council was August of twenty-twenty. So the bills highlighted in that update were AB two-three-four-five, AB seven-two-five, AB eighteen-fifty-one. These are all related to housing, planning, and zoning. These three bills, AB two-three-four-five are have passed, AB seven-two-five and AB fifteen, eighteen-fifty-one, I'm sorry. Again, not all the bills in the staff report will affect us operationally, but we've just included it in there just so council is aware. And the recommendation is that for city council to direct the city manager to implement all required procedures and policies in alignment with new and applicable state laws. And that's all for the legislative update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we begin with council questions? I will first call on Councilmember Mann. Do you have any questions of Ms. Chan for your presentation?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Questions, but it would be nice to see our city staff since we don't get to see you.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to remind them to make sure that they get ready for the on-camera, their their on-camera show, so.
Tenny, this is as good as it's getting. Don't worry about it.
The next, the next, the next presentation, I'll get ready and have my camera on.
Not a prob, not a problem. Okay. Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
None whatsoever.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
I have no questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Looks like, obviously, the legislature has been very busy in going through a lot of these, you know, there's obviously many that don't apply to the city, and some do or some don't. But, you know, I'm confident that our our staff has made a thorough review and will take any necessary steps to make sure that what we have to do will be done. Okay, so open, we'll open public comment. I will begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak on this matter.
Mayor, there are no email requests, and there are no public callers.
Thank you. So I will go ahead and close public comment. Any final questions by any council members? I've seen, seen none. I will go ahead and entertaining a motion at this time.
Mayor Chavez, I'll move to receive and file this report and direct the city manager to implement all required procedures and policies in alignment with new and applicable.
I'm muted, sir.
Yes, all right. We have a motion and a second unless there's any objection. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yeah. Okay, now we will move on to our next item of business, and that is the fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one mid-year financial status report. Mr. Cook, are you going to begin that, or Mr. Miss?
Yes, Susan will take over. This is a kind of compendium to item C as well. Sorry, that was my fault in the order of the agenda. Usually, we do the audit first and then talk to you about the mid-year.
Oh, yes, you know what? You're right. That that was my mistake. I'm sorry. Why don't we go ahead and do that since we're not really into that? Is that okay? Mr. Murphy, are we real good if I pull that out of order?
So we're going to change the agenda and bring item C in front of item B. Unless any of the council objects to that, we'll let the mayor just do that on his own.
Okay, is there any objection to that? Yeah, I remember we had talked about that, Brian, my my fault. So we'll hold off on item B. We'll move to item C, which is our comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. So we are now on item C. So go ahead, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Before you is your comprehensive annual financial report, your audit. The audit is done by independent auditors. They do not work for me or Ms. Pacaros. They work for you. They work for the legislative body that in the governing body that you represent. The auditors report any issues or anything like that to you. As you know, we do have an audit committee comprised of Mayor Chavez and Mayor Protem Yu, who meet with the auditors before the audit begins and will communicate with the with audit committee if there is any issues and do an expert interview as well. I will let Ms. Pacaros, our administrative administrative services director, who serves as our CFO and our city treasurer, to provide a quick review of our caffè.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This report before you regarding the audit that ended in your fiscal year nineteen-twenty, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and, sorry. It's not moving. Sorry, my, my camera is frozen. Sorry, it's frozen.
It's okay. Take your time.
It's making me sign into my Adobe account. Give me a please.
Modern technology, it's a great thing, and sometimes it's a frustrating thing, so.
Do you want me to show the presentation?
It's just asking me to sign in for a therapy. I just, I apologize. Yeah, Peggy, can you go and sign in? It looks like it's frozen right now. Sorry. Okay. So next slide. So, sorry, I apologize for that. So the auditors have two opinions regarding our financials. One is the financial statements, and they gave a clean, unmodified opinion for us, which is a clean audit. So what that means is that we conform with accounting principles that are generally accepted. We conform with the reporting requirements in accordance with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and this is a board that establishes the accounting and financial reporting standards for the United States, states, and local governments. So we follow them. And then next one is that they also found that our financial statements are presented fairly. The other audit opinion the auditor provided regarding our internal control over financial reporting. This year, they found they had two findings. The first finding primarily is regarding our payroll accruals and that our timing was off. We had some that were recorded in June when it should have been July and vice versa. So staff and I will confirm, make sure that doesn't happen again. And then the second finding is just regarding mainly the accrual of their accrued interest payable for the bond for a successor agency, and that's only about five thousand dollars. So we'll ensure, and I think they put this as a finding because it also happened last year, so we'll make sure it doesn't happen again, that we we book it timely. Next slide. So our general fund summary at the end of this audit reflects that our general fund revenues are almost fifteen and a half million dollars, while expenditures are about fifteen million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And along with the other transfers in, we looked at, or we have almost fifty-four thousand dollars in net fund balance. Next slide. So what this means is that the year end of fiscal year nineteen-twenty, the general fund balance has a total of twenty million, ninety-seven thousand, nine fifty-three. Of that amount is non-spendable at eighty-six thousand. What that is made up of is our prepaid that we've made and also the loans receivable that certain agencies owe us. And then with the the council's approvals, we committed three and a half million dollars, and that consists of liquidity, emergencies, and local economic uncertainties. The ten million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for assign, and that was also reserved for, for example, facility management, economic development, opportunities for one-time expenditures. And then our last category is unassigned of six million. And then our last category is unassigned of $6,56,188. And this money is, has not been assigned or restricted for anything. And just to let you know, the estimated June 30, 2020 fund balance during our fiscal year 2020-2021 budget adoption was estimated at $18,030,000. And what the cause of that is, is that our revenues were higher by $800,000 than estimated while our expenditures were lowered by almost over $1.2 million. So that, those two primarily made up the differences between the original estimates. And then just to let you know, this $20,97,000, that represents 130% of our operating expenditures. And then the unassigned fund balance of $6,56,000 represents almost 40% of our operating expenditures. So at this point, the city is in a good position, especially compared to other cities in Southern California. So with, with council's continued, you know, prudence in our budget, we continue to do well in our reserves. However, the one thing that will impact us is the COVID-19 pandemic. And that will potentially impact our fund balance in these subsequent fiscal years. Next slide. And lastly, our citywide summary for the year ended is that our total city revenues came in at $21.5 million while our expenditures came at $22.4 million. Of course, some of that is from our special revenue funds, for example, like property, off-see. And we're dipping into their fund balance and not the general fund. In total, the city's net position is slightly over $70 million at 70.3. And that's lower from last year, last year's $71.2 million. And the decrease is mainly the factor of the increase in our liabilities for pension and our other present benefits or OPE. And that's about $3.1 million increase and because of the discount rates that were used. And then however, that 3.1 is offset with about a $1.9 million increase in our cash investment. And so that is it for this item, for the caper item. Any questions?
Before we turn it over to any questions, I'd like to turn it over to the audit committee because again, the auditors do report to the audit committee as well and to you as the legislative body. Anything from the audit committee as well?
Okay, Vince, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No, nothing to add. I, I, clean bill, hell, I think that's what we heard.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, you know, I just want to thank Roger Alfaro and his staff from, how do you pronounce it? I, I D or Eddie or Bailey? I can't remember how they pronounce it. I D, but did a great job as always and really appreciate their work. And, and they had a lot of good things to say about staff when we did meet with them and the cooperation and everything that was done and, and, you know, hats off to, to our staff for, for doing all the work necessary to really get us a pretty good, clean audit. So, so thank you for that. So if that concludes the presentation, I will go ahead and ask, are there any council member questions at this time?
I, I have one quick question. Is our, yeah, is our general fund balance higher or lower than last year?
Lightly higher by $50,000.
I didn't hear.
Go ahead, Susan. I'm sorry.
It's higher by $54,000 than last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's better than being lower $54,000, I suppose. All right. Unless there are any other further comments or questions, I will open up public comment, ask our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
No, Mayor, there are no email requests to speak and there are no public callers on the line.
Thank you. So I will close public comment. Any final questions by any council members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report, the independent auditor's communication to city, independent accounts report, and also the independent auditor's report on internal controls.
Have a second. Councilmember Sternquist, seconds at motion? I saw her lips move. I just didn't hear.
Your, your mic's off.
I'll take that as a second.
It won't let me unmute.
That's all right. That's the technology for you, as I said. All right, we have a motion and we have a second unless there's any objection. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protemu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you. That motion passes unanimously. And we will now move back to item B, our fiscal year 2020-2021 mid-year financial status report. Mr. Cook, I'll turn it over to you first.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. Before you today, as you know, we've been going through a much more robust review quarterly on, on the budget considering the COVID-19 pandemic and its economic impacts. The, the mid-year budget presented to you today that Susan will briefly go over really reflects the reality of what is happening. Good, thanks to the good, strong conservative budgeting efforts by Susan and staff, our general tax rate, our general taxes are doing, are on, are on target. But what is, what we expected and what we anticipated was with lower activity where we get fees for activity, both those expenditures and those revenues are going down. Come, a couple of the quick highlights too is that we've had some salary vacancies as well that will not be sustainable over time, but is helping us as well. So we are getting through this crisis. The, the mid-year budget is not in any way, shape or form disastrous, similar to what you're seeing with a lot of other cities. But we are still trying to understand the longer-term impacts of this event. We just received our third quarter sales tax numbers today, literally. We'll be, we'll, we will be beaming with HDL tomorrow. We just recently met with HDL over our property tax revenues that come in stable. But the prognosis or the, excuse me, projection by HDL going forward, in particular with property tax, is a much slower growth rate than in years past. The last year or so has really reflected a major uptick in property values, which has been advantageous for us. We've been lucky that we have not been dependent on sales tax, but Susan will go over that very briefly over the next few minutes on our, with her presentation. But I would say overall, stable news so far and has put us in a good position to continue to go forward. But some of it will, we will be continuing to monitor it because some of it is truly not sustainable over time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Susan.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor, Mayor, Lieutenant, councilmembers. So tonight we'll discuss the, the financial status of the city for this mid-year beginning from July 2020 to December 2020. And so the recommended actions that you receive and file the report along with the related documents and also authorize staff to revise the revenue and expenditure budgets for this fiscal year 2021. The presentation overview is I'll go over an analysis, a brief analysis, go over the revenues, expenditures, fund balance, have a conclusion and also the outlook for the city. So in that, analyzing our data for from July to December, we know that the COVID-19 pandemic restrictions of the social distancing and stay-at-home order has affected, impacted the construction industry, lodging, restaurants and the travel industry. For the city, our general fund revenues, as the city manager mentioned, the taxes, category of taxes is on, are on track except the transient occupancy tax. This is a tax that the travelers pay the hotel, hotels or motels when renting a room. So this is lower than anticipated and you'll see a budget amendment for that. The fees and charges are the ones that we have seen a significant reduction in revenues compared to the budget estimates. Licenses and permits, and that includes building permits, temporary parking permit fees and code enforcement fees. We also see lower revenues for charges for services and that includes zoning fees, recreation fees and facility rental fees. Then the last one is fights and forfeitures and this is regarding the court lines as we've also are tracking below what's been budgeted. The other revenues for general fund are on, on track and is on budget. The other, the only other non-general fund revenues that, that's out of track is the MTA bus pass sales. Everything else is on track. And with the bus pass sales, with the city being closed or city hall being closed, we've instructed the passengers or the residents to purchase their bus passes at the distribution center. So we will need to lower the revenues, the budget revenues.
Susan, can I have you hold on for just a quick second? We're having another technical difficulty. Can you hold on for just a quick sec? Sorry. Councilmember Sternquist, can you still hear or? Mayor, could you mind, do you mind if we just take a three-minute break? We're having a technical issue. Sorry.
All right, why don't we take a few minutes and we'll, we'll resume in a couple minutes. Thanks.
The expenditures, really there's no, nothing really to change there except as the city manager mentioned, we had some vacancies in the past six months. So we will be requesting a budget amendment for those salary costs. So with the proposed budget adjustments, the, the overall fiscal health of the general fund is that we will meet the operating expenditures despite the health order restrictions from the COVID-19 pandemic. We're, we're estimated to have a, an operating budget surplus. And the two main factors of that, of course, is the CARES Act allocation, which is the Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act of 2020 from the federal government and that is a one-time allocation. We received $446,250 for that. So that helped with the surplus. Additionally, the reduction in salary costs has also helped us achieve the surplus. However, again, as Mr. Cook mentioned, this is not a sustainable measure for cost, long-term costing. Small that we, we will need to fill some of those positions in order not to reduce the services to the community. So the, the budget amendment for the general fund revenues are as follows. You know, the biggest one, of course, is building permit fees and recreation fees. Those have been definitely affected or impacted by the COVID-19 restrictions. Our recreation fees, of course, are, are down because we have not offered the same amount of classes or programming to our community. Same thing with building permit fees with the construction slowdown, it's also affected the activity in the city. The next highest one is the zoning fees, of course, that is primarily tied to all the construction fees. Our overnight parking permit fees are also being reduced, which is the temporary parking permit fees. We'll, we'll see what direction it will be in the following six months. So the total reduction, well, one thing, we are seeing the intergovernmental of 443,910, an increase of that. And that includes the $446,000 CARES Act allocation. So the total proposed budget amendment is a reduction of $437,640 for the general fund. Any questions at this point before I move on?
What, what is a transient occupancy tax?
That is the hotel tax that most cities have. Our tax, I believe, is 10%. So if someone were to book a room in one of our lodges or inns in the city, in addition to the, let's say the rental was $100 a night, there will be a 10% tax added on to that. And that.
Would that be like Airbnb or?
I'm not sure the Airbnbs get the TOT applied to them.
Airbnbs are, are subject to different types of issues related to transient occupancy taxes. That's something we have not tackled. This is traditionally your hotels, your motels.
Do we have more than one motel in Temple City?
We have, we have a couple.
I know about the one on Rose Street. I didn't know of any others.
I believe there's two in the city. That's why our revenues are so low because we don't have to. And it's not a mainstream or main, or big main hotel.
Thank you.
So here's the graph regarding the categories of our general fund revenues. The blue is our current budget and the, let's see what color is that? Maroon is our proposed with the budget amendments. The miscellaneous revenues is increasing by over $318,000 and that includes the CARES Act allocation and also the, this also takes into account the the court lines or the fines and forfeitures. The property taxes in Lou VLF, which is tied to our property tax and the sales tax, as you can see, have no changes. The sales tax, we've already reduced the budget for that compared to last year's. So for now, these first six months, it is on track to achieve our budget. So we're not proposing any amendments to these three categories, the three types of revenues. As you can see, the last two categories, licenses and permits and charges for services, we are requesting over $361,000 decrease and a $394,000 decrease for those two categories. So you're looking at almost $760,000 of reduction in just those two categories. And so it, it's our, all right. So it takes our current revenue budget from $14,792,20 down to $14,354,890.
I actually have a quick question.
Yes.
I'm a little surprised that sales tax didn't change because.
Yes, we already, the adjustments, we've reduced our, our budget because of the COVID-19 impacts. So right now we are tracking and some of the restaurants and some of the other sales tax did not go as low as predicted. So we're currently at the same state right now. Of course, and I'll talk about in the next few slides, the second surge may affect that steady stream of sales tax revenues.
In addition to that, on the sales tax side, Mayor Protemu, what's called the county pool, so when you purchase something from Amazon, it goes into a county pool and is distributed to all taxing agencies in that county and on a statewide pool as well. And those numbers have skyrocketed. So the fact that we don't have kind of the big box realtors, retail outlets has helped in that sense as well because where we've had some downward trends on the restaurant side, it has not fully captured the gap because Susan did a really good job with the budget projection back in June of last year. But kind of kind of buffered against that law, that loss that we saw. The other loss that we saw or the other gain that we saw was on the grocery store side. Several of our grocery stores have done very well over during the pandemic. Now, it hasn't caught up to the total losses that we saw from the prior fiscal year, but it did mitigate the loss significantly.
Thank you.
Susan?
Yes.
Property tax had no change, but it it seemed that the prices anyway, if you look on Zillow or would have you increased this year by in 2020 by about 9%. So I'm surprised that didn't go up.
We've also accounted for the increase on the base effect value. So that's already included in our budget. We don't see the immediate impact on the the sales change or the pricing change for the sales. So that that doesn't go into effect immediately.
Okay, thank you.
So the next one is the budget amendments for the general fund and expenditures, as I mentioned before. The amendments are primarily because of the vacancies. There is one category, which is a recreation specialist that we're proposing to decrease the budget. And these are the instructors that we hired to hold classes, you know, for the community. And so we have not held any. So at this point, I'm only requesting for 50% of the budget in case, you know, hopefully the COVID-19 pandemic starts to let some of these restrictions. However, because it's a July to December review, I'm only asking for 50% of reduction. And then, of course, the salaries for full time and part time. Again, a majority of these are because of the vacancies. And some of these positions, though, I did not budget for the full remaining term of the fiscal year. For example, the maintenance workers and partisan rec or public works. I've only projected two months worth of salary savings for them as these two or these positions are essential to the services for the community. So I anticipate we'll be filling these positions before the fiscal year ends. Then on the part time side, the parking administration's the parking officer, enforcement officer who we budgeted, but we have not filled the position because we did suspend the enforcement of the overnight parking. Additionally, the parks and recreation, the $254,000 reduction we see here, that's related to the recreational leaders and the senior recreational leaders salary savings. We're not offering those classes and programming to the community. So in total, the proposed budget adjustment for the general fund and expenditures is 525,820. So here's the other graph. So as you can see, these are by functions. The general government, we're requesting a reduction of 115,810 and that's from the city managers or the management services department. Public safety, this is that parking enforcement officer. There is no change for community development. Parks and recreation, you'll see it's they're the ones who primarily will have the salary adjustments of 381,130. And public works is minimal at 5,500. Again, I'm only budgeting two months worth of salary savings for that division. And so our current expenditure budget for general fund is 14,745,240. And with the budget amendments, the proposal will be 14,219,410. So where where this takes us for the fund balance for general fund is that the operating surplus will increase from 67,880 to 156,060. However, we do have the capital improvement and one-time expenditures that will decrease our fund balance by 243,940. So initially, our, as the last item that was presented to you, we we had a fund balance of 20,97,953. However, with the revised estimates, it will drop to 19,854,130. And of this 19 million, 5.8 million would be the unassigned balance. So in conclusion, our July through December 2020 fiscal status is that we are requesting reductions in general fund revenues and expenditures because of the pandemic. As Mr. Cook mentioned, it's impacted our budget, but not devastating like some of our Southern California cities. And the COVID-19 also has affected the function of our city operations. For example, you know, less building activity because of the restrictions, it means less building permit revenues. It is difficult to determine the long-term trend, especially with this COVID-19 pandemic. You know, we will come back to council if it requires significant structural adjustments. We'll continue to monitor and analyze what the impact this pandemic continues to have on our revenues. And moving forward, we'll always be cautious. So the outlook, again, you know, this November 2 surge has reinstated the restrictions, at least not as restrictive as before, but still it's provided no outdoor dining anymore, only to go. This will cause additional budget impacts for us as primarily over 30% of our sales taxes from restaurants. And then secondly, there is no second stimulus assistance that was passed recently for the state, there's no assistance for the state, county, or municipal government levels. So that's also an outlook that we have to think about. We're not sure what the new administration will do, but at this time, that second stimulus package that was passed recently does not include allocation for our government level. So what this means is that if our general fund tax base remains flat long-term, we will or we may face deficits in the coming years as our expenditures in certain areas continue to go up annually. So this is the last point I have. If there are any questions, I'll take it now.
Thank you very much for that report. Are there any questions from council at this time? We went through our questions already. So I'll open up the public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests to speak at this time?
No, Mayor, there are no email requests to speak and there are no public callers on the line.
And I will go ahead and close public comment. Any final questions or comments by council? Hearing none, I will go ahead and entertain a motion. I believe we have a receive and file and approval of to authorize staff. Anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to receive and file and the rest of what you said, Tom. I forgot.
All right. Well, basically, we're going to approve and authorize staff to raise to revise the revenue expenditure budget estimates as proposed. So that will be the motion. Is there going to be a second?
Oh, second.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Viscara. And so we have a motion and a second unless there's any objection and we could get roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara, excuse me, Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Protemu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Susan, and your staff, and of course, everyone who worked on it. I know these are very trying times. Doesn't make a budget world any easier, that's for sure. It was always difficult to begin with, but now you add on a pandemic and it becomes more of a nightmare. But we're getting through it and so thank you very much for your continued hard work. We will now move on to item 11, our update from our city manager.
Mayor Chavez, members of the council, I'll be brief. Couple items. First, I'd like to thank Lieutenant Frank Larriz. This will be his last week as acting captain. And it's been such a smooth transition between Captain Flores and Lieutenant Larriz taking up the helm starting next week. Mark Reyes has been promoted to captain by the Sheriff's Department in the panel that I sat on a few days ago. We'll start his his command of the station. But but I just wanted to thank Lieutenant Larriz for not just holding down the fort, but making sure that things were not only running smoothly, but doing a great job. So thank you, Lieutenant Larriz. I appreciate it.
It's my pleasure and I really like serving Temple City. I really appreciate the support we get with the Sheriff's Department. And I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that Mark has a has a smooth transition to captain. So and I just want to say that, you know, unofficially, you guys are my favorites.
We'll make sure to get out in the public. Are you going to stick around?
I'll be around for a while. That's the captain's decision, but I think I'll be around for a little while.
All right. Well, thank you. I think all of us echo Mr. Cook's sentiments. I know this may sound cliche, but you are a trooper also for sticking in on these meetings and and staying with us all this time and we thank you for that. It's not easy to listen to us sometimes, but you've been there and and it is much appreciated. And we wish you and whatever, wherever you end up, I know you will do well. So thank you so much. We appreciate everything you've done for the city of Temple City.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, anything else?
I think it's more painful to listen to a group of city managers, but that's just me.
I would agree. I would agree with you there, that's for sure.
Last two things, our CDBG program. We've had a lot of success on the rental side. The commercial side has been a bit of a struggle for various reasons. We'll be coming back to and no reason, staff has done an outstanding job of really reaching to and working with the business community. We'll be coming back to the council at a future meeting to talk about some adjustments, proposed adjustments, and maybe some different relationships with the LACDA related to that for your consideration as well. Lastly, we got a few items coming up soon. The state of the city, along with the Citizens Academy, abbreviated version of that to try to engage the residents of the community. More outreach will be going over the next few months related to trash services as well. And then also to our commissioners who don't usually get a nice recognition, will be getting a recognition with all of you soon and to thank them for all their work during this year. That is it for me. Mayor Chavez?
Hey, thank you. Item 12, update from our city attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Ms. Chan's report to you, especially in its written form, took away a lot of what I would have had to give you over the next couple of weeks in terms of legislation. I did want to update the council and the public on the current lawsuit by the Apartment Owners Association against the state, the County of Los Angeles, and several large cities regarding eviction moratoria. The responses by the various defendants are all due later this month. And there should be after that a hearing scheduled that sometime in February or potentially early March, in which a number of the cities are going to try to get out of the case, basically, by by pointing back to the county and state moratoria. I did find out that smaller cities like Temple City are generally not an issue for two major reasons. One, the county and state moratoria have really superseded what most small cities did. Most of the cities had adopted moratoria that, much like yours, were fairly reasonable and balanced. The state, the county were very concerned about tenants' rights. So to the extent that, you know, these, this lawsuit is brought by the Owners Association, what you had done, they didn't really take issue with. Or at least I should say what cities like you had done, they didn't take issue with. We're going to continue to monitor the case. Obviously, that's off the clock and just for our own knowledge. But I'll bring back updates to you as it goes along so that you know what's going on, your residents know what's going on. But but for now, the big thing that they need to know is that the County of Los Angeles has extended its eviction moratorium and the state legislature is taking on another bill to extend the state moratorium. And so to the extent that the Owners Association has issues, those are going to be the entities to which they're looking to help resolve the issues. That's my update for tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll now move on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Does anyone have any reports to make at this time? I don't think anybody has met. So, okay, so we will now move on to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. I'll begin with Councilmember Sternquist. You're muted, Cindy.
I don't have anything other than wanting to share that Tenny, I believe Brian, is going to give us a library update at our next meeting.
Thank you for that reminder, Councilmember Sternquist. Yes, Tenny will be providing the council with an update on the progress on the final stages of the construction with the county library.
Brian, do you think we can get some pictures for the council to see?
Sure, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Contact Mr. Mar tomorrow.
All right, great. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any last comments?
No, I really don't have anything tonight. Once again, though, I would thank all of our staff and especially Brian for for the great work you guys are doing, hanging in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, I'm excited to hear that we're bringing back Citizens Academy, even if it's a abbreviated version. So certainly looking forward to that. I did have, I guess, two things, perhaps maybe our city manager can help. On recently, there's been a lot of news released about COVID vaccinations and its availability. We, you know, the LA County just, I guess, indicated that by Thursday, I believe, they're opening up vaccination to everyone over the age of 65. There's issues with the websites. There's issues with booking appointments. You know, people can't find available dates. People think the links don't work. I guess, is there anything we can do to maybe help clarify some of that confusion for residents that might be interested in that? There's just a lot of stuff out there and it's
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mann. Actually, Ms. Chan and Ms. Flores and I were talking about that this afternoon. And based on some of the feedback, we were about to put out some social media posts and other things, but we held back because of some of the things that some of the feedback we were getting. So we've done a good job of, Ms. Chan and Ms. Flores have done a good job of synchronizing and really kind of putting in easy, understandable language where to go, what to do. So we'll be working on that over the next few days and taking, making sure there's reliable information that that's actionable for a resident to do use and kind of give them the caveats of what to that's actionable for a resident to use and kind of give them the caveats of what to potentially expect so far.
Brian, what site? Where do we go to for that?
There's LA County website called vaccinate la county.org. I'm messing up the URL. There's a county website that's there just to deal with just vaccinations, but there's been some problems with it. So we'll, hopefully, I'm actually on a call on Thursday with Dr. Ferrer as well with San Gabriel Valley Cities. So once we get some more reliable, actionable information.
Mr. Cook, if I can provide some updates to that, I saw the press conference this afternoon, and I watched the town hall meeting this evening.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Azimi.
So the seniors 65 and older are able to register as of today. Previously, when they were trying to register, the registration site was limited to healthcare workers. And so they've modified it to identify seniors and what documentation they need to bring to the vaccination site to verify their age. They're going to be limited in number of appointments because they have a limited supply of vaccine. And so those appointments are going to have to be still shared with Phase 1A who are receiving their second vaccination, as well as who are 65 and older that are eligible to receive their first vaccination. And so, and the website is vaccinate la county.com.
Thank you, Mr. Azimi. So we'll make sure we're coordinating all the information that staff has and making sure there's a coherent, understandable message that we're sending to the community.
Brian, that was my question. What city site do we go to?
Not a city site.
Yeah, you go to vaccinate la county.com.
No, I knew about that. Okay.
It's a county site. And I can tell you I can tell you from personal experience that if you go to vaccinate la county.com, you will not get through to anybody. You will not be able to register. It is not working. And I guess all you can do is keep trying.
I had the same experience.
I had a good friend of mine went on that website today. He was on for a couple of hours, was about ready to give up, and something magical happened. And he was able to make an appointment at Magic Mountain, of all places. I was on the website for two hours before our meeting. I was able to put in information, and then every time I did it, a message would come back that the system was just down or wasn't working. So, you know, it's good information. I mean, I guess we just have to keep trying. It's one of those things that, you know, I'm sure everybody and their brother is trying to get on at once. Anytime you have everybody trying to get onto one website at the same time, we all know what happens. And, you know, it's unfortunate because, you know, it's been kind of standard for the operation of all of this is we're told we can do something, yet we don't. We're not able to actually do it, which is, you know, again, unfortunate. But keep trying. There's also another number that you can call. I have, it's 833-540-0473. You can call that number between 8:00 and 8:30 p.m. for assistance with reservations. I didn't try the number. I'm sure you'll get a busy signal or you'll be on hold for quite a long time, but it's another avenue to try. But, you know, I mean, everybody's keep telling you, just kind of keep trying. And somehow, hopefully, you'll get that, you'll get that appointment. Thanks, Brian, for following up. And Brian, just send us, Brian Azimi, just so all of you know, send us an update with that information. We all should have gotten an email just recently with that. So check your emails on that. Good. Thank you. All right. Let's see, where are we? Who are we at? We lost track. We, Councilmember Viscara, did you have the opportunity to talk yet?
Yes, I did. And I jumped in with somebody.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
I think it was me. Just one more, one more question. I noticed, this is in regards to particularly restaurants that are still operating takeout in Temple City. I noticed some other cities have at least discussed some possible policy things that they could do with respect to the fees that Uber Eats, DoorDash, and these other, what do you call those type of services, the delivery services? Really something local cities have control or jurisdiction over in terms of limiting or capping fees to help businesses? Or is that just, we're in fantasy land?
It's a little complicated, but I would defer to our city attorney, Mr. Murphy, for any other kind of, from a legal standpoint, what kind of jurisdiction and abilities we, legislative abilities we have.
I hate to use the term fantasy land, but there are very few ways for us to monitor that, very few ways for us to enforce. I believe that some of the cities have taken action. At least what I'm reading, the actions that have been taken are not being followed up on. So I would rather not put something in front of the council and have your businesses expect that something would be enforceable if, in fact, it may not be. If the council would like me to look more into the ones that are being enforced, I'd be happy to do so. But as I say, the majority of the ones I've been reading about were sort of statements that were made at a certain point in the pandemic, and they don't appear to have much in the way of teeth to them.
Okay, thank you. I think it's just as a matter of just due diligence, I just thought it'd be interesting just to know what the facts are on that. I know a lot of people maybe do things that maybe have no teeth, like you said. But I think at least as a, so I you know, seek all avenues if possible, but if it really is doable, then at least I would like to know. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protemu, any last words?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Well, I just want to echo some things that said before. Thank you to Lieutenant Ruiz for helping us and looking after Temple City. Thank you so much. And wish you well anywhere you go. But I also want to say you really, in this special time, thank you. To a big thank you to all the city staff, city manager. I mean, it's really tough out there, and you guys are still out there. And like our sheriff's department, fire department, still keeping all the city services. And so thank you for that. Just one last thing to keep note of the financial situation. And I appreciate the mid-year report, but I think that's something that we collectively need to perhaps think about, you know, what we need to do in the future. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Right, yes, you know, February is actually shaping up to be a very busy month. As mentioned before, we have the State of the City address, the Citizens Academy, which I know we're all looking forward to, at least in its abbreviated fashion. And hopefully, next year, we'll be able to do more with that, of course, getting back to normal. We also have the Lunar New Year's celebration coming up on us pretty quickly. And so I know that Parks and Rec is planning a virtual event as well. So hopefully, we'll all take advantage of that. So, yeah, so that's, you know, we're business as usual, obviously, for many of us. And we'll keep things moving along. I did want to share with you that I did, and maybe some of you as well, but did receive some holiday wishes from Captain Flores. And I know he's doing well, said to say hi to everyone. And so it was good to hear from him now that he's in retired life. So that's a, that's a good thing. And of course, Lieutenant Ruiz, my only regret is that you did not be able to come to, I know you've been to them, but not as acting captain or breakfast meetings and all the getting together and being able to talk personally. But, you know, we had to put those on hold for a while. But again, thank you for always attending and being there and doing what you can. And we appreciate the team as well and keeping our city safe. So you should be commended for that. So thank you. Okay. Let's see, I think that's it. So let's move on to item number 15. We will, any additional public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests to speak at this time?
No, Mayor, there are no requests to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll close public comments. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned for the evening. So thank you very much. I just heard the wind blowing out there and just got a picture of a downed tree in the city, which I know Mr. Cook will be taking care of shortly. But be safe. And if we don't have enough on our place, we have to worry about trees falling now. So I'll tell you. All right. Well, stay safe out there, everybody, and we'll see you soon. And have a good evening. Have a good week. Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.